Everybody up?
Okay. Welcome, everybody, to the March fifteenth, twenty twenty Huntington Union Preschool District Extended Budget Workshop. Can I have a motion to open the meeting?
Motion.
Xavier and a second from Kelly, all in favor? Let's rise the pitch. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our usual emergency procedures are that we who are in the room know where the exits are. And that was just to our first presentation.
There with me for a second. Okay, here we go. So tonight, we are going to focus on one specific cost center, that is the nine thousand series, which is primarily employee benefits. And we're also going to discuss capital project proposals, which would actually take place during the summer of two thousand twenty-two. It's important that we come to a decision this evening as the capital proposition would have to be approved by the board, according to the state determined timeline by next Monday. So with that said, couple of quick reminders, back in February, we established a tax levy limit, and at this point, that has not changed. Dr. Ackers submitted this to the state comptroller before March first, or tax levy limit for twenty-one, twenty-two is one fourteen, four thirty-three, eight thirty-eight, which amounts to a one point eight five percent allowable increase over the current year's tax levy. And again, anything beyond that would require a sixty percent super majority voter approval, and we're not in a position where we're going to go anywhere near having to do that. We talked a little bit last, at the last meeting about budget challenges, we talked, I'm going to say at length about the transportation situation that we're facing, we are going to have to put out a request for proposal, and that is going to come with the costs attached to it. Again, technology costs primarily related to the pandemic and the one-to-one situation we have been able to accomplish in the district. Special, special education, special education placements, which are somewhat unpredictable and can often happen on a moment's notice. And these are required, plant operation and maintenance, again, related to the increases related to pandemic-related costs, salary stipend, health insurance, these are all things that are on this list annually. So before we get to the capital, let's take a quick look at the nine thousand series. I did not include the function code numbers, I don't think that's necessary, I have in years past, but this is all part of the nine thousand group. You can see here the list of items we'll look at briefly. And as with the last few presentations, I'm going to share the associated numbers all at once, and any questions can be asked while this slide is in front of you. So we're looking at the New York State Employee Retirement System, rate set by that system, New York State Teacher Retirement System, the rate also set by that system, social security costs, workers' compensation, life insurance, unemployment insurance, disability insurance, health insurance, dental insurance, a collection of other benefits that collectively don't amount to a huge relative number, debt service and interfund transfers, a couple of things I'll point out, and then the board can ask any questions. The increases you see that are significant, the employer retirement system, the reason you see that five point six one percent increase is because the employer somebody waiting to come in. The employer contribution rate this year is fourteen point six percent, it is going up to sixteen point two percent for two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two, and again, that's a rate that we have no control over. Teacher retirement system, that is a situation that's always, that's always a concern, it's also experiencing an increase from this year to next year, but the increase is more nominal, it's going up from nine point five three to nine point eight percent. We've also been able to move some salaries around, which has helped in that regard as well. A social security, and due to a reduction in salaries that actually took place this year that impacts both TRS and social security, that's why you don't see significant increases there, but we also have to consider the increases that would be in place for next year. Health insurance, again, always a considerable cost, and something we're, we're, we're looking at routinely. The estimated actual for twenty, for twenty twenty-one is actually below what we anticipated. But again, we've, we're, we're at the beck and call of nice ship here in terms of where their rates are set, and they set their rates on a calendar year basis, so we, we can only predict so far in advance. Debt service, you see a little increase there, those are our TANS, not, this is not our, the remnants of the two thousand six bond issue. The TANS are up a little bit, primarily because of the rates that we've received and some of the risks that goes along with that this year as compared to last year, but we still have considerably high Moody's rating, and it does allow us to borrow at very low rates, and this is the only borrowing we do, the tax anticipation notes in the debt service area. That's simply because the town tax collection schedule does not match the district expenditure schedule. The interfund transfer line is a little bit unique, and you'll notice the twenty nineteen, twenty actual looks much different than anything else on that line, and that's primarily because we are, that reflects the capital reserve usage in nineteen twenty, so it's really a pass-through, that's where the capital reserve money that's used ends up. That, that's really an accounting mechanism more than anything else, what we truly need to budget for are the, it's actually our two thousand six bond issue, the debt service is not in debt service, it's in interfund transfers, and C-fund expenses are in here as well, so if our school lunch costs us a little bit more than we're, we're, we're making from it, that's going to reflect here as well, and we've operated at a loss for the past couple of years, primarily because of making sure that there's no, there's no issue with, with students paying for lunches, and we've also had some pandemic-related issues that have impacted us there as well, but we should be able to operate with a very similar budget number next year as compared to this year. So that is a very brief synopsis of the nine thousand series. I'll stop here for a second in case there are any questions.
I just was asking Kelly if she knew what TANS was, you explained it, but I don't know, did you get it, or did?
Tax anticipation notes, we sell them every year. Basically, what we're doing is borrowing because the town does not collect taxes at the same time that we need the money to be spent, so in September, the, the town has not collected the year's taxes yet. Until the town does that and then share the taxes that are ours with us, we've got to borrow to cover those expenses, so Kathy, what did we borrow, eighteen million this year in notes? And we pay interest on those notes because of our high rating and the fact that we have no other debt at this point, minus what's left on that two thousand six bond issue. We can, even during tough times, we can borrow at relatively low rates, and that's a tribute to the, to the board, and it's fiscal conservatism over the years.
So Jim, that two hundred and sixty thousand, that's the interest.
Linda, just make sure you get really close to the mic, everybody, if everybody could talk really-
Right into the mic.
So that number we see is the interest, right, that two sixty, two hundred and sixty thousand.
Jim, I have one more question, on the interfund transfers, so the four-point million number, that represents the capital reserves that we transferred over last year for projects like the roof, the lockers, that sort of thing.
Correct, correct. And it's not something, it's an account, it's more of an accounting feature, we don't have to budget that, that's coming straight out of the reserves, it's not really part of the budget, but that's, it does end up as part of the general fund at the end, at the end of the process.
Can I just add something?
Sure.
About the TANS, so you're going to see this when we present revenues, so that TAN's interest is two hundred and sixty thousand dollars, but based on our credit rating, we get a premium back. So you're going to see that as revenue, so it really, we're not paying the full two sixty. I'm trying to, I think we got about a hundred and twenty-five thousand back.
What's the net cap?
I said, we received about a hundred and twenty-five thousand back, so you'll see that when we present the revenues. So it offsets the, what it looks like would be that large expense, but we actually get revenue back from, because of our, our good credit rating.
So are you saying, so are you saying that the net expense is then one forty, not two sixty?
But you have to reflect the entire expense on the expense side.
Right, that the expense is two sixty, but
It's offset by the premium that we-
It'll be one of those other revenues you see. And again, a function of our, our Moody's, our credit rating. Anything else on nine thousand?
Jim, health insurance and dental, we offer one plan for each, right? Listen to the mic, Linda, health insurance and dental, we offer one plan for each of those? Yes.
That is correct, nice shift. Dental, we just changed plans, as a matter of fact, we've changed plans a few times over the past several years, trying to find the best
Yeah, it's common.
Options for our staff members in a cost-effective manner.
Okay, and just to point out something that you always point out, again, this goes first budget. The health insurance is on a calendar year, so it changes rates in the middle of this budget.
Correct, Kathy, what, what rate did we use as far as an increase for the first portion of the year? Do you recall off the top of your head?
I don't recall off the top of my head, I did, I did health insurance a long time ago. First half might have been like at like seven point two.
Which sounds about right, and honestly, we're not getting the communications from nice ship as often and as thoroughly as we have in the past, and we have, we really are sort of flying blind with respect to calendar year twenty twenty-two at this point, so we'll, that, that'll happen as we're in, in the budget year, and it's, it's a little bit disconcerting, but it happens every year, and we've just got to take that into account when we set up that, that line of the budget. Health insurance is not cheap.
Back to the TANS, do we see that revenue offset this budget?
Yes.
Calendar, okay.
When you see revenue, you, you won't be, you won't necessarily be able to match them up unless you know you're looking for it, but we'll point that out when we get to the revenue presentation.
I didn't know if it would be carried over to next- It's going to say premiums from obligations, that's the revenue line, you could see it in the current budget draft also, if you look at the revenue page.
That's a good point, Kathy, I should mention that the draft, current draft of the budget is also posted in board docs for the board and for the public as well. So what we're showing today is all included in a line-by-line budget that is posted each week, each draft is posted, it's updated on the website, you'll see prior drafts as well as current drafts, so you'll be able to see everything we're looking at tonight and past and soon to be future, all on, on the website in the budget section and also on the main page. Thank you for pointing that out.
Any other questions on this?
Okay.
Okay, so we, we started with, I'm going to say about a one point six million dollar gap between levy limit and our budget draft, and we have made some changes since the last meeting, and you'll see here, transfer to capital, that is a something we, we are able to do each year, it's a hundred thousand dollar project that we can get, we can expedite and get, if I'm not, if I'm not mistaken, Kathy, immediate aid back on.
Yeah.
Because of all the capital work that we're doing in the house, we really didn't need to do that this year, so that also reduces our expense line. The other costs are based on actuals, a lot of the BOSI's costs have come in less than we had initially budgeted because we have actual numbers to work from now, so BOSI's has given us their rates, and we can budget more precisely than we could have a week, two weeks, three weeks back.
Summer school, because there wasn't summer school, or because there isn't-
This is budget for next year.
So they won't, we're anticipating that there wouldn't be, or that's-
Oh, we're anticipating that it's not going to cost us as much as we projected in the past. Okay.
Jim, I'm sorry, the budget, the BOSI special ed is out of district, BOSI's placement, special ed rights, we anticipate fewer kids in those programs.
Fewer kids or less costly placement, so it's not necessarily one or the other, it's, it's more likely a combination of both.
Okay, because different programs can have a different cost attachment.
Yeah.
Correct. Okay, in summative fashion here, you'll see that the difference between working draft and the levy limit has come down since last week to under a million, it's at nine hundred and twenty thousand and change. We, we don't anticipate considerable difficulties getting to where we need to be to avoid obviously anything close to overshooting the, the tax levy limit, and there'll be some conversations in the weeks to come about revenues and how we address hopefully additional revenues. There are things that have been cut from the budget that we potentially like to put back in, if that's the case, and there are other expenses that we may reduce further as, as time goes on here, but revenue is still a little bit of a question, I'll explain why, but we are, I'm not going to say halfway to where we need to be at the levy limit at this point, and the board, again, it's the board's option to go below the levy limit, you can adopt a budget, the levy limit that is below what, what we've calculated back on February eighth, but to get to that levy limit and ensure that there is no exceeding the cap, we're nine hundred and twenty and change away, nine hundred and twenty thousand. And with that said, current draft, two, three, nine, budget to budget, with a two, six, seven percent tax rate increase, and at the levy limit, budget to budget, one, seven, one, and a one point eight five percent, and that number has been submitted to the comptroller. And obviously, revenues can be, we can reduce reserve, use of reserves, which would also, we can increase use of reserves, we can decrease use of reserves as, as presented in the current budget, and that would impact the tax levy as well, so these are conversations that we need to have moving forward. Any questions on these numbers? Okay. I actually added this slide today because we did get a little bonus information on the Senate and Assembly proposals as compared to the executive proposal, that's a couple of weeks old at this point, and the Senate and Assembly have done some things that are a little bit more education-friendly than in the executive proposal. Both the Senate and the Assembly One House proposals include additional school aid. They both reject that consolidated expense-based category, that, that consolidation, that makes it a lot harder for us to predict through the years and also budget accurately. This I had mentioned briefly in a communication that because of the pandemic circumstances, the Senate has actually built in an eight percent, as opposed to four percent, undesigned funds balance, Assembly six percent. It also is pointed out, we need to be very careful with that, and that's not something you want to take lightly or go to unless you need to do that. The standard, somebody will let in here, the standard undesigned fund balance cap is four percent. Building and transportation aid amnesty, both the Senate and Assembly restore that. That is our, potentially our four hundred and eighteen thousand, two hundred and ninety-two dollars included in that. Interestingly, both One House proposals include early retirement incentives, and that's of obviously a potential long-term savings, there were some very bold proposals, I think the Senate had a forty-five, twenty in there, I, I don't think that'll come to fruition, but I know the fifty, the fifty-five, twenty-five has been tossed around quite often, again, this is in an effort to address some of the state financial concerns, whether that happens or not remains to be seen, but both houses are considering something. Increased broadband access, that has come up quite often, particularly during the recent digital equity summits, and the Senate also addresses special services aid and an increase in BOSI's CTE salary cap. Again, none of this is guaranteed, I will provide more detail as the weeks go on, but understand that these two proposals look markedly different than the initial executive proposal, and now is when the negotiation at the state level begins, and hopefully they will get to a, a finishing point prior to April first, so we can finalize our process with the needed accuracy and precision.
Did they both propose their retirement incentives as just a one-year thing, or?
Not necessarily, not necessarily, and again, I'm, I'm pulling this in
Right.
late in well, today, which is the details aren't there yet, and I was trying to get a sense, I, I know the amnesty restoration is different in both proposals, I could not find the specifics. I did hear that they were different in both cases, but in the summative documentation that I had a chance to look at today, the specifics were not there.
Always nice to be offered amnesty for something you didn't actually do wrong.
Well, yeah, and we, we, we know that, as do, as do our state legislators, Senator Goran and Assemblyman Stern have been working diligently on our behalf, it's just very difficult when it ends up on the governor's desk, and it's just stamped without being looked at, and we are not alone there, there are dozens of districts in New York State in the same position that we are in that respect.
And that's just based on the, because it has dollars attached to it.
Correct. Okay, at this point, Kathy, you ready?
I'm ready.
This is really the, the highlight of this presentation, a discussion of potential use of capital reserves and projects that we wish to complete in the near future, so.
Okay, so before I begin discussing projects, I just wanted to remind everybody that the projects that we propose are recommendations that we take from our five-year capital plan that the architects have put together for us. All of our capital projects are funded via building improvement funds, in other words, our capital reserves. And just to be reminded that the only way to establish a capital reserve is with voter approval, and along with that, the voters also approve how much we can fund that reserve and for how many years. So before I get into some of the proposals, I like to show what work has been done the previous summer. So in summer twenty twenty, I'm going to be showing you some of the projects that we have completed, and I always get excited, excited over the boiler projects. I do, I, ever since I've been in this position, I love boilers. Look at the the first screen, the, on the lower right, lower left-hand corner, you see we had two boilers, and you can also see in the other pictures, some of that work going on to remove the system. So Jim, you can go. Additionally, just still removing the old system, and on the bottom right, you could see the new water boiler waiting to be installed. Now, I'd like a drum roll. And here is the new boiler system. What's so wonderful about this is previously, we had two boilers in the high school, and they always had to run simultaneously. They couldn't, you could not shut one down, they both had to run, and they ran continuously. This new system allows one or four boilers to run, so we, currently, we've been running on two, and that gives us the energy savings that we're going to experience from this, I'm very excited about. We could conceivably run the high school on one boiler at a maintained temperature of sixty degrees if something happened to the other three. So this definitely was a cost-effective system to, to put in. And now, Jim, I'll just show just how pretty the boiler room looks, can you believe it, the boiler room could look pretty.
It does look impressive.
Not like Freddie Grigor lives there anymore. Look at what it looked like before, and this is, it's a showcase, it's beautiful, they did a wonderful job. Big job, they came in on time, and I just want to give a shout-out now to George Austin, who literally stays here twenty-four, seven during all of our capital projects to ensure they are, A, coming in at budget or under budget, and B, coming in on time, so that's a, it's a huge commitment, and I appreciate his efforts with making sure that that happens. Okay, Jim?
From boiler two?
To the roof, to the high school roof, gonna take a field trip up there again. So that high school roof, this is such a huge roof to replace that we've been through the years doing partial replacements. The piece that was replaced this past summer was over the art and music wing, this is just a picture of it before, go ahead, Jim. One more before and some of the removal. And then you will see, we have a TPO roof that we've installed on here, it's called a cool roof, not just because it's cool, but because it, it does, it does things for us, in the summer, it keeps the cool in the building, and in the winter, it keeps the heat in, so it is an energy-efficient roof that we have been putting in all of our buildings across the district. Okay?
Next.
So we have the track, so we had done, we painted the track in order to complement the new turf that was being put in, it was, we wanted to make sure that the whole package looked like it should, and like what our athletes deserve, so that's the painted track.
And just a reminder, when this was completed, we had set aside a separate, we had actually voter-approved a separate reserve fund and moved the money from the repair reserve where it didn't belong into this two thousand eighteen building improvement fund. That money was set aside to replace the turf and track, it's got about a ten-year lifespan, this was anticipated by the board. And before I started here, I'm going to say twelve years ago, or maybe even before that, then the bottom line is, we did use that money specifically for what it was intended to be used for.
Can I pipe in a question, or do you want me to wait till you end? It's about this. So last time, we had like a savings plan every year to make sure that we had the money in the reserves, is that, do we know what that looks like, what we need for that to continue for the next time that it needs to be replaced?
Well, you're talking, we'll talk turf, actually, when we get to capital project proposals, but you're talking about anywhere from a nine hundred to a one point two million dollar expense, that's probably a broader range than I need to give you, there are some possible options there with some different types of turf that may come in a little cheaper, but we, we can certainly look at that, at those costs when we get to that specific slide. So I'll let you keep going, Kathy, here with the photos.
Yep, this is the removal of the turf going on. Okay.
What's the expected lifespan for the new turf?
It's the same as, usually it's a ten years.
I should add that the-
We got thirteen.
Thirteen, yeah.
Yeah.
So you say it's more than ten, then?
The land tech would probably tell you ten, but i- if, if you take care of it, you can probably squeeze another couple of years out of it. I will tell you, by the time it was replaced, it was matted, and it becomes hard as a rock, and it's dangerous for kids to play on. We had actually our first game on the new turf, official game, our field hockey team, a two-nothing victory, and it is, it is like a plush carpet you're playing on, it is, you know, obviously a much different surface than it was before it was replaced.
And it's obviously good luck.
That too.
So the state wants you to get fifteen years out of it. So if, if you don't get the full fifteen years out of it, they don't fully age you. So, yeah.
And can I ask, how much did the replacement of the turf cost as compared to how much we set aside in the time while we were saving?
We had to make up about a two hundred thousand dollar difference.
We were two hundred short?
Yes, yeah.
Now, did that include-
That money in the reserve.
Did that include improvements to the track or just the turf?
What we've been able with the money is that we had in there, able to do the track, the track was just painted, it wasn't resurfaced, but that all came out of the same money.
Yeah, and we did make improvements like sinking the, the posts for the, the anchor, the anchors for the netting and stuff like that.
The nets.
Goalposts, and that's, that was all part of the project, yeah.
Right.
So just make sure you're near the mic.
Oh, sorry, so that was technically a little bit more than just turf replacement, it was actually an improvement as well.
Yeah.
Yeah. Now, remember, when, when the voters approve a capital project, it cannot come in in any material way over what is approved, so if, if it did, the project would stop in its tracks, so. Yep.
Yeah, this is another thing we should note, over the years, we have had absolutely no increased change orders to any of our capital projects, so that's been, that's been quite an accomplishment, and then this is the final product, here's the turf field installed.
And finally?
And one more project, finally, the Finley locker replacement, we've got it before on the left and our after on the right, and the entire hallway was also re-tiled at the same time, so it looks really, really pretty.
Now, what you can't see on the left is how difficult it was, is, was, open those top compartments.
Just the whole locker, actually, but yes, it was hard to close the-
It was, it was time, those poor kids.
They've been there for a long time, right?
A very long time.
Are those the one that you could bang to open up?
You used to be able to do that, now even the, the banging was not going to open them up.
Okay.
All right, so that was twenty twenty, and just to give you an idea of our used to reserves over the years, you could see the funds that we've placed, that we've put in and the funds that we've taken out to accomplish the projects that the board has approved and that the voters have approved. And you could see that spike there in seventeen eighteen, that is when the board made a decision to do some packaging up of multiple projects, so we, when we go out to competitive bid, we were able to get very competitive pricing, such as doing three roofs at once or three security vestibules at once, so that really helped with bringing in the prices. or three security vestibules at once. So that really helped with bringing in the prices and to get a lot of work done.
For the past several years, we have used much more than we have been able to replace. And that obviously impacts us moving forward, which we'll talk about shortly. But yes, you can see that in this slide as well as in the the seventeen eighteen, over seven million dollars of capital work. And you see that in that very tall gray bar, three from the right.
Right, so this coming summer, these are our twenty twenty-one approved projects, just to remind everybody. So at Southtown, we'll be doing a roofing solar power system. It's a pilot program. It'll be the first one in the district. At the Jack Abrams Semagus School, we are reconstructing the auditorium and flooring similar to what we did at Finley. So all the seating will be replaced and the floors will be replaced. A boiler replacement project at Finley, there are two boilers at Finley. That is, we could not have gotten through another winter with the current boilers that we have. So that's very good that we'll be getting that replaced.
Kathy, how many is it? Is it two?
Two.
Okay, I should put that in there.
And then at Finley, we're also reconstructing some, two classrooms to be more of an upgraded science lab.
And it's not just classroom, that is classroom, that is laboratory, that is prep room. That's why the number is as high as it is.
Yep. And then continuing on with the partial roof replacement at the high school, this area will be over the gym and gym lobby area that we will be doing this summer. All of these projects are at the state. We're waiting approval so we can go out to bid.
And these were approved in May of last year. There's a one-year lag between the approval and when the bulk of the work gets done. And obviously, you can't do a lot of this work when the kids are in or when school is in session.
How how is the the timing or the speed of the processing and approval of those at the state?
Not good.
Right.
In fact, I just had that discussion with Jim this morning.
You want to mention a little bit about the the data flow process?
Sure. So right now, the state is at back to being at a big lag and they're at sixteen weeks. Unfortunately, with the types of projects we're going to be doing, sixteen weeks brings us beyond when we should be starting or bidding. Because remember, we can't bid until we get it approved. This would bring us to June before we could even bid it out. So three projects are going, we're going to going to be using a third-party review. And that fast-tracks the approval of the project. There is a cost. But it does guarantee you have the projects well within the time that you would need to get them back, and that would be the boilers. And that would be the auditorium and the flooring, as well as the science labs. So those three are going to a third-party review. And we will get them back well within time to bid, and the other projects will be fine with coming in when they're going to come in.
So can you explain to me in very small words how a third-party review that, you know, I guess we we pay for?
Yeah.
Allows us
Seventy-five hundred dollars a project.
Allows us to get this, the state still has to sign off on this, no?
Yeah, it's a process, but
How is it that we pay?
Okay.
You you understand where
I I do. So what happens with a third-party review is the people that review the projects, they're architects.
Okay.
And the state has only so many architects on staff.
Okay.
So using this third-party review, it's through a BOSI's, and they have a numerous architect companies that are working for them. So you send it through the third-party review and they get, you get an architect almost immediately assigned.
And I assume because for BOSI's that the state inherently trusts them, and that's why their review
We've done multiple projects this way before in the past. It's usually boilers we have to do it because there's so much that has to be bid out on a boiler. And but there's so much to review on a boiler project that, you know, the state we've done the third-party reviews with the Woodhull parking lot. We've done it with a couple of projects that are pretty large projects. And you get them back so quick. Is it right?
I was going to use the word frustrating.
Yeah.
Do, I mean, I'm thinking, don't we have architects actually consult and help us build the plans anyways?
They can't review it.
I understand that.
Right.
But so it's
Right. And so, yeah, they they, yep.
We pay our architects six percent, right? And on top of that, we got to pay these other architects another percentage, or is it a fee?
Seventy-five hundred dollars per project.
Times, times three, right? Three projects you're putting in for?
There's a variance built into the budget, so the money's there to do it. And it just, it it ensures that we get our project at the bid and done before the opening of school year.
Those fees can come out of the capital reserve?
Oh, yeah, it's built into our project itself.
Okay. And in the past, didn't we, didn't we, wasn't there like an emergency something you could tell the state, like this project is an emergency?
Haven't had an emergency project, but we've been doing third-party reviews.
Okay.
The the emergency approval, they are not loose criteria. So in other words, you you can't try and frame something as an emergency if it's not an emergency. The state will will kick it back in a heartbeat. So it really has to be an emergency.
Real emergency, yeah.
Like what you tell your kids.
Yeah.
Right?
No, I was just going to say, these are projects that have to happen over the summer, so we potentially make that money back in savings. Because a year later, it's only going to cost
So the three that are going for the the review are projects that have to be done in the summer.
Right.
The solar, we can work on during a break. We can work on other times. Same with the with the roof. And so those those projects, we didn't have to do that with because we have more flexibility of when we can do them. The others need to get done.
Right. And there's no flexibility. A year later, they'll only cost more.
Yeah.
That's one of the reasons we pushed so hard in seventeen eighteen, because we were afraid, not afraid, but expecting the cost of some of that work to go up. And we had the money, so it it was important to use it wisely.
The solar system excites me.
Me too.
I think it's a smart move. I think it's the way to go. Are we adding batteries to collect any of the excess power that we collect?
I I don't have the answer to that.
They, I know that's something that the vendors are showing us that works. They collect the the power. Put it in like the Tesla's batteries as an example. And it stores the energy for at least seventy-two hours, even if you don't have any clouds out. Every time we talk about this, I feel like there's new technology, there's new things out there. It's such a quickly moving target. I'm glad we're doing this building by building, because I assume by the time we get to the next building, something new might be out.
It is able to store. I I don't know if the batter- batteries would add to that process, but I I this system is designed to store the energy for use when it's needed.
Oh, it is designed to store, but I don't know about the
Yeah, and the problem is the batteries actually raise the still, at this point in time, still raise the cost pretty significantly. And you have to, you know, kind of weigh the value of storing it as opposed to perhaps selling it back to the town by dumping it back into the grid in that regard. So you get, you know, basically offsets to your other electrical costs. So, yeah, it's, they're still working through that stuff. Nice thing about the batteries is that you never lose power. You know, it's it kind of acts as your generator.
And this is a nice way to do it where we we can look at it from an incremental perspective, so it's not a all-inclusive outplay at once.
I think there's even some controversy about the batteries, though, and the metals required to produce them and how environmentally friendly they themselves are, I believe.
They're trying to use the recycle, the elements of the phones to use, I think, to do that.
Because otherwise, they're mining a lot of the batteries.
Yeah.
I think it's also the disposal of the batteries is
That too.
Yeah, when when the battery is lighter, one of those course.
They're all exciting stuff. And
Very exciting.
It's it's great that we have this plan because we, since I've been here, we haven't had to or or thought about, well, maybe we have thought about it. But we haven't gone out for a bond or or tried to find big money. You know, it's it's all been about careful planning to get us here. And and it's something I commend you guys for doing because it's really you've led the way in doing this for us.
Everybody here. Thank you. But it's also a philosophy the board has has adopted and poured into. So thank you for that as well. Kathy, you want to speak a little bit to aid ratio? I see that the the notes here, but making sure that the board and and the community is aware of what we spend and what we get back.
I don't, I can't. Question, I didn't understand it.
Aid ratios.
Oh, aid ratios?
Yes.
Oh, it's thirty-nine percent, but we may be going up to forty-one percent next year.
Okay. Just explain what that means. So that everybody up
What?
Whatever we spend, we get X percent back amortized over time.
Okay, so yeah, it's usually amortized over ten years, and we have an aid ratio of thirty-nine percent back in state aid on our building projects, and we're hoping that it goes up to forty-one percent next year. So we're spending X amount of monies, but we do receive money back as building aid, so that, you know, helps our revenue flow.
It's not as high an aid ratio as I'd like it to be. There are districts that have higher aid ratios, but to get that amount back is, and obviously, we we don't want to do this in a manner that does not provide us with an opportunity to to get that back in revenue form.
There's no exceptions to the percentage that we get. It doesn't matter where the money is coming from, as long as it's spent on capital. We still get the thirty-nine percent.
It it, yes.
And that money goes back into the capital reserve fund, right?
No, actually, the building aid is a a revenue source of state aid. But that does not go back
Can't go back in there.
That goes into our general revenue to 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 run the district. Transportation aid, BOSI's aid, building aid. That's part of our state aid flow.
And that's because, Lynda, you're not, if you spend a million dollars and you have a forty percent aid ratio, you're not getting four hundred thousand dollars back that year. It's over time, it comes back and returned as part of uh, it's it's revenue, general fund revenue.
Okay.
If for some reason you're not, we're not able to complete the projects within the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year, we can reserve that money to use for whenever we're able to complete them?
Yeah, that money is for that project. So once we get a project approved, it, this is where we, it's called our H fund, right? Not our general fund, or it's our H fund is where, so the money goes in there. And that's specifically for that project.
Okay.
And you can use it for nothing else. And if there's any money left over, it goes back to the reserve. So, but it doesn't go away. Okay.
And Kelly, in all the, all the years I've been here, I don't recall a project that was not completed.
I'm just remembering the vestibules, and I feel like that might have extended, but maybe you guys had earmarked multiple years for that.
No, but it was, it wasn't multiple, we did, we, it was multiple years, and there was also some it may have been something done in the fall as as opposed to the summer that year for a number of different reasons, but we did not capital reserve budget that all at once. So it was
Okay.
Different schools were
For different years, okay. Yeah, you might be thinking about the Jefferson vestibule.
I think Jefferson was first, right?
Yeah, that was And
Woodhull
Yeah.
Was completed in the fall, I believe.
Because that has a lot to do with the the materials. We're getting hard, a lot of schools were doing it, getting the right kind of, you know, bulletproof glass and and whatnot was at a premium.
And in that same vein, do you foresee any issues with the timeliness of getting the bids in and approved and all of that, or?
No.
That comes quickly after you get the approval from the third party or?
No, we're we're going to be in good shape. Okay.
It's already started. And again, these projects, even though they are summer twenty twenty-one, they were approved last May, so we've been able to plan accordingly in terms of state approvals, et cetera.
So right now, the third-party review turnaround is about forty-five days. Or less.
Okay, ready for discussion?
All right, here we go. Okay, so just so you know, how much money is available currently in our in our reserve funds? Again, I said that when the the reserves are established, there's lots of rules around them. It's in our reserve plan, that's on the website. But our two thousand eight Building Improvement Fund, we are no longer able to fund that reserve. But there's money in there because if a project comes in under budget, the money gets returned to the reserve. So that's why you see a little bit of money in the two thousand eight. You see a little bit of money in the two thousand thirteen, because again, under, you know, budget project, money goes back to the reserve. And it's now available for other projects. The twenty seventeen, we're actively funding still. We have about four million eight hundred twenty-seven that we could still fund into that fund before we have to determine if the board wants to set up another capital reserve fund. And the twenty eighteen, that was the one for the turf. We could still fund that one at nine hundred and thirty-seven thousand. That one can still be funded, but this is what you have to, for your twenty-one, twenty-two projects, the three million five hundred twenty-five, two hundred and seventeen.
And it's not, it's not the net in that fund, it's how much you put in it over time. So it doesn't matter how much you use from it. One was capped at ten, one was capped at twelve, five million, that is.
Yeah.
Once you reach that that cap, that improvement fund is done. And if you want to continue funding capital projects this way, you would have to voter approve another Building Improvement Fund. And again, what's the benefit of using different districts do this in different ways? Some transfer to capital from general fund, which comes with it some legal boundaries. Others float bonds. We have always been very careful in terms of of taking on new debt. The reserves allow us to do what we do incrementally. You can't do it all at once. It's not one of those those things where you can do massive amounts of projects that address needs and wants. But this allows us, we have a five-year plan that's continuously updated, and we can plan both short term and long term.
The two thousand eighteen fund is a general fund or it has a specific, it has the specific purpose of turf?
When the proposition is put in front of the voters, and actually, when you adopt the proposition to be put under the voter in front of the voters, there is a stated purpose for the use of those funds. That had a little flexibility in it, but it was primarily, and it had a, it had a low cap, because it really was designed just to take that money from the repair reserve and put it put it there, so it could be used in in the right legal manner. But it was primarily for the turf, and I think there were a couple of
It was primarily for the turf, but the way that it's worded, you can use it for other projects. Okay.
Is there room in that fund for additional contribution? I think there is. Said nine hundred.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's nine hundred and thirty-seven thousand, we can still contribute to that. We have a total, we're able to, with our existing reserve funds, we're able to contribute five million seven hundred sixty-four thousand dollars more. Right, without establishing another reserve. So that, you know, right now, this year, we have what you see, and we have the potential of adding a little over five, until we'd have to make the determination to establish another fund. Okay.
Actually, a question?
Does our budget this year include a contribution to any of these funds?
So it's it's not our budget from this year, you're right, fund balance from the current school year. Yes, there will be exactly how much remains to be determined, and that honestly, we won't have that number until June thirtieth. But we do anticipate, as we have every year, being able to to put some back in.
This might be a stupid question, but why are there not listings for every year? What makes these years different, where they have balances left over?
Those are the years, Kelly, that we were in need. We we had reached a cap, we're close to a cap in one fund. So those just happened to be the years where timing was right for approval of a new Building Improvement Fund.
So it's kind of like a slush fund that can take our overflow of where we want to
When you approve the reserve fund, you can, you say, I'm going to, we can fund this up to ten million dollars, but it takes years to put ten million dollars in there. So you don't need to make a new one for four years, because you're still funding the one that you established already. So it's like a savings account that you can only put ten million dollars in.
Proposition not only set, indicates how the money in the fund would be used, and also what you're approving is, the voters approve how it's funded. So is it coming from undesignedated fund balance? Is it coming from the general fund? Is it coming from other revenue sources? So all of it has to be laid out in the in the proposition that leads to the formation of a new fund. Two thousand eighteen, we wouldn't have have, the reason we had to add that fund, we had room in the two thousand seventeen fund, but the two thousand seventeen fund was not approved for turf replacement. So we could not use that fund for that purpose, so.
And that's the one that's going to have eight hundred something thousand, Kathy mentioned?
Nine hundred and change.
Nine hundred, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So anytime we have a a capital proposition, we review it with council just to make sure that our verbiage is correct. Because again, everything has to be laid out very specifically, what the caps are, how 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 long. It's it's not only a monetary cap, it's also a length of time. If you didn't use it all, or you didn't contribute by X years, it becomes defunct after X number of years. How it's funded and what it would be used for has to be very specifically laid out across the board.
And approved by the voters. So it's a separate proposition to establish a new fund. It's also a separate proposition to approve how you're going to use the funds that are in the existing funds.
Right. Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm going to be, um, suggest, you know, providing some proposed capital projects for the board's consideration. And I just threw this picture in because I'm going to be referring to Finley Parking Lot Area one, two, and three. And I wanted you to have a visual of what those areas represent. So the entire parking lot project is one point three, but if the board decided it wanted to do it in stages, these are the suggested phases from the architect, as well as from their condition. So Area one is in the front of the school, Area two is the faculty parking lot, and Area three is back by the gym. So just when you see me referring later to Areas one, two, and three, you now know what I'm referring to.
You can see the patches from this far away.
It was a visual for you. Wanted to have a visual. Okay. So here are some of the capital project proposals. So we're, to continue with the roof replacement at the high school, this section would be on the second floor over the classrooms. The middle school, uh, parking lot area two. The Finley Middle School gym bleachers, they are original to the building. They are falling apart and.
Safety issue.
Right?
Safety issue.
Yeah, very. Um, and then we continue with our boiler replacements. Um, so Jefferson Primary will be the next school that we would, would do if the board was to approve that, and they have two boilers. Additional projects for consideration?
Now, Kathy, that would leave how much?
Three million, not ninety-five?
Balance.
Balance?
From the, if three point one million.
I don't have that balance.
It gets.
We'll go back a slide and, oh, I hate to say that, you'd have to go back to.
Three one. It's, it's about, it's about four hundred and thirty thousand dollars left after spending three point.
Yeah, four hundred and thirty, two hundred and seventy-one.
Okay.
Thousand dollars. Okay, so other capital items for review. So the, the, we could do a solar project at Flower Hill. The reason it would come in higher than Southdown is because we have to relocate the original transformer to be able to patch in the electrical panel to our existing electrical, um, transformer. So that alone is a hundred and twenty-five thousand. That makes up, you know, a hundred and twenty-five, so it really is a four hundred thousand dollar project. But in order to do it, we have to upgrade that electrical at a hundred and twenty-five. They also need a boiler replacement, there are two. It should be done within the next three years. It's not like we're Finley, we couldn't get another winter out of it. We could probably get three, three or four more years out of those boilers. Same with Washington's boilers. Um, there's two there as well. And also, the Washington alarm system should be replaced. The Finley Middle School, if you wanted to do two more, um, science labs, that's the cost for that. Remainder of the parking lot area one, area three, and adding a turf field to Finley Middle School, or adding an additional turf field to Huntington High School. So those are the projects from the five-year plan for your consideration.
Now, you have about four hundred and thirty thousand dollars to work with here.
Five thirty-five.
And that, you know, obviously, you want to cushion in case, w- once, once a project is approved at a particular cost, if, if it, if it's, comes out markedly more expensive than that, the project doesn't, doesn't go forward. We've never had that problem. Uh, but obviously, when a voter approves, uh, when the voters approve a project, they're, they're approving the project itself, but also the cost of the projects. When it came in way over what we anticipate, it, it can't happen. So we don't anticipate any of those projects going up way beyond what we've, we've estimated at this point. Uh, and there may be some say we can, we have some, some great people doing the work here. Often, things come in under budget. Uh, but there is, you know, obviously, not that much left in reserves right now. So there's limited flexibility in terms of what we can do.
What, what is the, um, what does the alarm system entail? That seems to me just, it does it alarm system.
What does it alarm?
Security, I mean, if it has to do with security, I would think that would be something we want to tackle first.
Is it a fire alarm? Is it a? Yeah. I mean, it works.
It's just an up, just like an upgrade?
Right, it's one of the only buildings that has never been upgraded.
It includes a, it's a complete replacement.
Yes. I was curious.
Fire, security, et cetera. It's not, it's not dysfunctional, but it needs, it's like, like the boilers, it has a limited lifespan. It really should be replaced and upgraded.
And you said, Kathy, the others have been, this is the last one? Yes, yes.
I was curious about the solar project at Flower Hill. Why, why Flower Hill? It seems like the shadiest school that we have. I don't mean that, I meant it has the most shade. Shaded areas.
When we first were looking at the different solar projects, the architect and PSC and G and, um, some, some school staff went around to each building, and then they do a sun analysis. And it was their recommendation that Flower Hill would be next.
Interesting. I don't know, I've, I've done, uh, garden work in the front of that building, it gets pretty hot.
Okay.
I don't think there's a building where it wouldn't work, but you've got to obviously build it according to. There's some things we can't control, i.e. the sun's angle.
What type of factors would you weigh in determining if you were to, we were to approve this turf field, which school that would go to, either Finley or the high school? Well, what, what would, what would the?
I'm sorry, Kelly, I missed the question.
How, what type of factors would go into thinking about which school would get the turf field? Either Finley or the high school?
There had, there have been arguments in both directions. I, I know from an internal perspect, perspective, there, there's a, a lot of, uh, push toward the second field at the high school simply because of the condition of the grass field that's used routinely for some of our varsity and junior varsity contests. Uh, the problem with the turf field, and that is, that is a high-end number. I think Land Tech gave us a range from nine eighty to that number, so it could come in under that. And I did have a, a brief conversation with Mr. McCarthy about another company, it's slightly different type of turf. They'd be willing to use us as, uh, one of their initial clients, but still does, does not do much more than bring it down to about seven hundred thousand dollars. And unfortunately, the money is just not there in reserves right now.
Is there any way that we can partner with somebody with regards to that turf field if the money?
Xavier, the mic, the mic.
Is found?
Mike.
Is there any way that we could partner with community members to create that turf field?
It's just a, it's a big number. I don't know.
What kind of community partnership do you mean?
I think residents, I think there's a lot of people, some of our booster members.
Like sponsorship?
Yeah. In, in participating in a turf field. I think that if we put it out there to the community that we can raise fifty percent, and maybe the booster club comes up with the other fifty percent, it's worth a shot.
Are we able to accept business sponsors and give them sign?
I understand.
I, I, I heard.
Are, are we able? Okay.
I, I don't know, we, we'd have to investigate what, what types of, what types of contributions we can take for a capital project that's going to get state aid returned on it. There are regulations that go with it because of that reason. Uh, and it's also because of the high number, it would not be time enough to do that for the twenty twenty-two process or for the upcoming, the upcoming capital.
And you couldn't really approve it unless you knew you had the.
That's, that's my point, timing is, is not, is not great.
I just know it's not a high priority bigot, you know? And it's come up before, we will always have things that are more important than it. And, but we do have a demand from the community that it's a big want, it's a big ask.
It's, it's, it certainly is a significant want.
So I know that there's members in the community that be willing to participate in fundraising for it.
What I would suggest is, again, based on timing, I, I don't see there's any way that we can get it done for the upcoming vote. Uh, but we see what we can do in terms of replenishing reserves between now and next year. Obviously, June thirtieth will be the day we have a better sense there. And then we can consider that at that time for the following year's process.
I, I've always wondered if we're certain that as far as athletics goes, that the turf field is the highest priority, not like more fitness workout space or, you know, some other kind of air, I don't know. But I was just, I know that there's a lot of, there's always been a lot of people talking about turf, but.
I know a certain judge that would say we need two gyms.
Well, yeah. That's, that's, that's a major reconstruction, yes, but.
Yeah.
The, the.
But I meant even like a smaller.
Field is something that not only, I mean, we have, we have teams using it all the time. And that, that's the only reason I'm thinking in terms of the Huntington High School second field, not that, not to take anything away from Anita Finley. Um, but you also have community groups using these fields all the time. And, and that's, that's a service that we provide. It's, it's their fields too, and we try and give them as much opportunity to take advantage as possible. And over time, I mean, in the, I, I know in the spring, particularly in the transition from winter to spring, those, those fields, grass fields take a beating. And, you know, when you're on the new turf field, and then you're playing the next game on the adjacent grass field, it's there is a difference.
Yeah.
And there is another aspect to remember, and that is as a community facility, you know, as you, you know, the way you, you, you stated, Jim, a lot of community groups use the fields, yes. Those are, um, you know, part of the twenty percent of our taxpayer base that don't even send their kids to the schools, but do pay their property taxes. And so I think it's more than, you have to kind of look a little bit bigger than just our teams and whatnot. We are a community facility and doing that, so.
Community uses the inside facilities too, though. I wasn't, you know, trying to exclude any community groups. I was saying that, you know.
It's just the same, same point, that, that these fields are not just used by our teams. They're used by, by many community groups. And obviously, our teams are, are, they're locked in in terms of the times they must be used. But plenty of outside sports groups that serve our community that use the fields, and we're happy to provide that.
Right. I, I, I guess I was just more thinking, you know, in general about a plan for what, you know, when you, when you're gonna make a huge expense like that, you want to make sure you, you have a plan for what you want the whole athletic thing to look like, you know? So that's, that's all I was saying.
Yeah, we've been talking about the, the second field for a couple of years now. So there's, there is definitely a.
Hey, Jim, how old is that number? When was that number last updated? Because I would have a hard time believing that those fields currently in the current economy and the business that those kind of contractors are seeing right now are going to really be that expensive. I, I, I just, I, I would have a hard time believing that right now.
Well, what I can tell you is that number's a week old, and that is the high end of the range that they provided. Uh, this, this came from Land Tech, and again, it was not, it is not a hardened firm number, it is an estimate, nothing more. And they provided us with a range from nine eighty to that number you see there. Uh, but again, in the essence of knowing what we have and what we don't have in the reserve, uh, in the reserve funds, uh, use the high-end number in this, in this presentation. It could be, in all likelihood, it would come somewhere in between that, that nine eighty and the one point one four six. And again, I mentioned that this is only one type of turf field. There are, how, there are now other types of turf fields out there that are, uh, they may use different materials, they economize a little bit. Uh, we, we can probably look at something else that would be closer to, uh, seven, seven fifty. I'm, I'm throwing out numbers right now, but there, you know, we, we went to the vendor that we've used in the past to put in the current turf fields.
And just to bring us back to the list, we have six boilers that are going to be needed in replacement in the next three years.
And also to keep in perspective, we wouldn't, you know, the, the original field that we put in and then replaced with a bunch of upgrades, that's why I was asking those questions earlier. Was, it was a, a, a field and a track, you know, these would be just a field, right? So you're just digging up the field, putting the drainage in there. So your, your overall costs are going to be, uh, lower than what you had experienced previously is there. That's why I was asking about how recent, how recent those numbers had come in.
It's, it's recent, and, and I can, I can anticipate that we could probably do a little bit better than that. But just for the purpose of having a number to, to review in the context of what's available, uh, again, this is the high end of the range, is nine eighty to one point one four six.
Would it be the same for either school, Finley or the high school, the cost would be the same?
Generally, the same process, same field, same drainage. Um, the, the high school replacement was a little bit cheaper because you have the, the drainage basins and some of the, some of the materials and the, the hardware in place already.
Yeah.
And we then moved up that price a little bit because it included replacement of the nets as well as the goalposts, so.
Can I go back for a minute to Xavier's idea? I do love the idea, and obviously, we don't have the funds to do the turf, additional turf field this year. But if we, can we look into council and, and if that is a possibility at all? You know, partnering with the community.
Yeah, I'd have to check that in the context of building aid and whatnot. But, you know, I think we can put that in the overall conversation for.
You know, if we set a goal for a year later, yeah, we'll think about. I think he's right, I think we would get a good amount of support. And may, who knows, Christine, maybe even, uh, a workout space. The turf field.
Would there be any scenario where it would be worth it, or even we would be able to forfeit whatever state aid we would have received if we accept community sponsorships?
No, not necessarily. Now, listen, my, my concern, and I'll, I'll be blunt about it, is we're, we're asking uh, quite a bit in the form of taxes already, and then to go on top of that and start soliciting donations. I, some may be willing, others may not be. So we, we just need to, to be able to have a plan internally, if, if we're going to do this, to plan our reserves moving forward accordingly.
I suspect that if you said that there was naming rights, you would have an auction.
Palacios Law Group?
I can imagine there's a lot of people in the community that would love to participate.
Yes.
Um, I have a, a, I mean, a blunt question, and that is, we kind of had this similar discussion last year and got pushed off. So let's talk about it next year. Um, I don't see truthfully looking at all of the other capital things. And we did a, oh, gosh, we took a look four or five years ago at the long-range plan and realized with all of the roofs they needed to replace and all of the building upkeep, there's no way that we were, oh, we were going to be able to do everything we had on the list from ongoing capital reserve contributions at some point between the roofs on the other buildings, whatnot. We were going to have to go to bond sometime. I guess my question to you directly and bluntly is, given all of the building capital things, when would a turf field ever make it into the capital reserve area of our budget?
If we look at, and, and I'm just going to throw this out there as a possible uh, thought in terms of timeline, if we look at possibly less expensive ways to install a turf that may not have been available to us ten years ago. Uh, and, and again, I, I haven't done a great deal of research, I don't think, um, we have as a school district. Uh, but I don't think it's that far down the road in the context of spreading everything out, making sure that we do what's needed and what can't be put off. I, I don't think we're that far off, if that's what, if that's what the board wants, and if that's what the community is willing to support.
Um, here's another thought for consideration, I'm spitballing here. And I'm not, and I'm not saying that that approach is necessarily wrong, Jim, because it is absolutely defensible from maintaining our facilities. Our current field that we have and have replaced was purchased under a bond that was not that big. A separate bond offering that would not be all that much to cover two fields, because I would want Finley and the high school. Because Finley really, I believe, needs much more, uh, a field. The, the, the high school argument is more one of convenience. Everyone's already there, it has the most exposure. But truthfully, an awful lot of our community groups used to always be at Finley, but they have since moved to the high school because there's another good field down there. If we put a good field up at Finley, you're going to get people back up there. Spitballing here, I mean, if you do a separate bond vote, you get a different, you know, it's, it's open to the community, but, you know, different turnout compared to your overall budget vote, especially like last year when we had, what, five thousand people vote? Because it was all mail-in, right? And the, the turnout was higher than we've ever seen. Again, in, in spitballing mode here, if we're never going to be able to get it in, and that's really what I'm seeing here, maybe we just admit, let's put it up to the community in the form of a bond and, and see what they say. Because I think if we did that, then we could kind of, uh, we could really look at the finances separate and discreet from everything else. Right? Because when you're working within the, the realm of the capital reserve budget, right? You do kind of have to weigh it against everything else, right? Whereas if you go out on its own, now you're weighing every dollar on its own merit. Will the community support it or not? Right? And that, so I would suggest maybe we look at two fields and we, we look at putting up a bond and see what they say. Because I just, I, I understand where you're coming from, and I don't see how we're ever going to get it into, into the budget.
Into the reserve process. I don't know that that's the case. I, I understand what you're saying, because right now, we're looking at that three-plus million in reserve monies, and it goes pretty quickly when you're talking about roofs and boiler, roofs and boilers. Um, you know, bond is a whole different conversation. Timing not necessarily great for a bond in general, and you've, you've got to be careful with bonds that are unilaterally focused because it will appeal to those that have an interest in the fields, but it won't to those that don't have an interest in the fields. And, and, and maybe if, if a bond were to be considered at any point, and, and I'm not saying this is the time to consider it, but if it was, uh, we may want to look at that needs and wants across the district as opposed to just an athletic piece that would appeal to. And, and believe me, I'd love to do it, I'd love to see two more fields here myself. Uh, but if, if we're going to go in that direction, we may want to open that up to further conversation, also get some feedback from the community to see what, what it is that, that they want collectively. I mean, I certainly know that you would get support for the fields, but there may be other wants and needs from other sectors of the community or people with, with different interests, and it would be important to hear from them as well.
Yeah, that's exactly what I was going to say. I mean, if you, I think.
Yeah, that's exactly what I was gonna say. I mean, if you, I think that a conversation about a bond, not right now in the middle of a pandemic, but in in, you know. Soon is not a bad thing to have a conversation about, but I doubt, I think I believe that. If we start to have a conversation about turf field, one, two turf field bond. We're going to hear from and we should hear from other branches, other parts of the community that have other needs. And wants because there are.
Oh, yeah, and I'm not opposed to that, but I think where I was going was it's, I'm not talking about a huge thirty million dollar offering. I'm talking about a very small manageable offering that gets very, like a surgical strike of bond. To, you know, get a whole bunch of little, not really expensive areas. Again, I I I I can, I can see how we could make that work.
So you you're saying just a bond for a turf field?
Yes, no, it's like when we did the turf field, we did auditorium, right? We did some other things as well. Um, a similar type of approach, a more broad appeal. Uh, fun, you know, capital improvement funded by a bond, not ongoing capital reserves. Again, I am not opposed to what we're doing here. I'm just saying, I'm just hearing that we're never going to get a field and I don't like that answer. So I'm now looking for other ways to get us there.
I don't think anybody likes that answer for sure.
I also don't think that that's the case with with. With timing as it is and and what we can, what we can potentially look at for, I I can't say. It's next year, I can't say yes the following year, but I I don't think it's out of the realm of possibility. Can't promise it because obviously dollars and cents. Are not always a hundred percent predictable, but. And I I think what what Bill is saying is this may be the only way we can get it in uh, in the near future.
Gives us a solution to the wants. I mean, that's been a want of the community that I've heard over and over again. And if I had to choose today of all the things on there, quite honestly, I don't think the turf field is one of my priorities. So because of that, I would say, let's think about the idea of leaving it to the community to tell us. Should we float a bond, a very small bond for something like that? And and if it fails, it fails and we've got to go back to the drawing board and continue to try to do it this way.
But would it, would it be? And I'm just throwing out ideas and I'm I'm. Thinking inside and outside the box here, would it be the right thing to do to put the idea on the table? To put it in front of the voters without getting feedback before we do that. I I think that that's an important piece.
The feedback of what the priorities are of the entire community.
Right, because there may be, you know, I I do, just from experience, I I know that when bonds are not. Broad ranging or at least don't have multiple focal points, that they're always at risk. Because you may have some, some people come out really in support, but those that are not in sport are not going to be as as vocal, but they're not necessarily going to vote it. To vote, vote to approve it. So I think it's important to to gather a little bit of that. Well, not a little bit of that, but to gather community feedback in advance. Uh, you know, obviously to prepare something like this for. The upcoming vote is that that's, I think, overzealous. Uh, but I think it's something we can consider in the context of everything else that has come up today. For, I agree, Jim, and I think that's why I suggested it be done separate. It be done separate from the general referendum, correct? There's certainly ideas worthy of consideration across the board here in terms of how this could be funded.
Proposing community meetings, Jim, about it to, you know, uh, get feedback.
Yeah, I.
Right, virtual.
Or even, you you know, you start before meetings, just putting out, putting out surveys. You you know, again, I think you're you're going at this time with with some of the struggles that that families in general are facing. I I don't think the discussion of a bond and and adding, you know, what's happening, districts that are that are floating bonds at this point, I'm just gonna. Make this somewhat clear. A lot of them are doing so, they're able to do it at very little cost because they have debt expiring. At the same time that they're adding debt, so it's 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 almost a net zero. I can think of a couple of districts that are doing that now. I don't want to call this a problem, but we don't have much debt expiring because we don't have much debt. So if you add a bond, even if it's. Two and a half million, it's going to add.
Yeah, that we didn't.
What people need to pay. So we, you know, we don't have. I don't want to call it a luxury. Luxury is not having debt and replacing it with other debt, but we we are in a good position right now and have a very. One of the reasons our financial rating is as high as it is is because we have almost no debt on the books. We got a fragment of a twenty six bond issue left in tans. That's it. But that does, that that does present a little bit of a fiscal cliff if you throw in, and that's why I think what Bill is talking, small. When you throw in the large bond issue, you're 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 going, you're going, no matter how you structure it, there's going to be a hit and. You know, is this the time for that? Probably not. But it's something we can consider as we start to emerge.
And the survey only gives us feedback from school community.
Correct. I I think the community has to be a part of this conversation to make it. You know, and we want to make sure that we get out there and get a representative sampling of opinions from the entire school community, not just, you know. Not just from a a small group of board meeting, we've got to go out, we've got to. Got to hit the pavement.
But the one other perspective, I just want to remind you where I'm coming from is I do believe that right now, the 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 prices are going to be. Much than we are going to see going forward. As we come out of all this and things recover. They're going to get more expensive. And so that's only really why I'm kind of leaning on it right now is.
I don't know about that. I mean, as a, as as a, as a wife of a person in construction, he tells me that. Right now, supplies are really expensive.
Supplies are limited.
Building materials are.
Because of supply chain issues.
Because, yeah, because of supply chain issues.
But interest rate is low, so if we do look at anything, we probably will never see interest rate at these rates ever again.
Correct. And that's where, and that's where a lot of the cost comes from, so.
Christine's right, building materials are incredibly expensive right now.
As the person who's in the middle of renovation of.
Yeah, yes, exactly.
Building materials arguing could be made for all the items on there then.
It's true.
In fact, most contractors saying their quotes are only good for a very short period of time right now.
Right. Well, and and again, go back to to seventeen eighteen, that's why we spent seven point one million dollars because the prices were right, correct? These are all good points.
And last summer, we did, we did benefit from a lot of contractors being available. And we came in under cost for a lot of our things that we did last summer, so that was a benefit there. So there's always. Yeah, there's probably about a million dollars that's going to be returned to the reserves based on coming in under budget on our projects.
And that's, that's another point.
Use it until.
Right. We we can't, right. We can't bank on that yet, that that. Set of reserve balances that's going to go up because some of the projects that we will do this summer are not going to be as expensive as. And because of exactly what was just mentioned. So are are we good with looking at that moving forward and considering, I just go back here. These items for the proposition.
I'm good at looking at it, Jim, but again, I just want to stress, I think it, we we can't like take a year to look at it. Because I think that the window of opportunity may be closing. I think we kind of have to look at it a little bit more aggressively than that. That's, that's my own personal opinion, Jim.
But in terms of the the proposition itself, I mean, that we we. Proposition, but.
Capital proposition.
Yeah, because again, I'm, like, outside of maybe the Finley parking lot, that's only half a million dollars. I I can't see anything in there that I would say is, you know, a a higher justifiable priority.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Okay, so with that said.
With that said, we'll move to our question and answer section. Yes. Is that what we're doing? I said we move to the next, to the.
Just, just the the last two slides of the presentation here. There are two propositions and and this has been our our modus operandi for. For establishing our our budget balance each year. The first proposition, twenty twenty one budget, I'm sorry, twenty one, twenty two budget. And the second proposition would be, uh, should the board adopt a capital proposition? It would involve those those four projects that we just outlined. And obviously, the conversations that we've we've had would be followed through upon as well. And upcoming budget dates as follows, March twenty second is significant. Um, we are really not looking at. You you know, I think we had this conversation last year that my, my goal was and remains to. Make sure that our staff is maintained, that our programs are maintained, and we are looking at some, even some areas where we can uh, open up a little bit. Um, but March twenty second is when we'll discuss instruction and staffing, the two thousand cost center. April sixth, we hope at that point, because the state budget is due by April one, that we'll have the revenues to look at. April nineteenth, the date of budget adoption, budget hearing on the tenth of May and the budget vote and election on the eighteenth of May.
Thank you for that.
Hang on a second here. Lot of pictures.
Can I talk while you're doing that?
Alright, so the only, and I don't know if there's, there's anything here, Kathy, just to provide an overview of what the capital. Plan process looks like at the state level and how this works, I think, just in in particular for Kelly who's new to this and for anybody who just doesn't. We we don't look at this that often, but I do provide a chance for you to review the five year plan each year. Uh, this is not overhauled yet, and actually, if you open it up, and I'll let Kathy explain this. Some of, some of the pages at the end. And it takes us. Of course, I don't have my glasses on.
You just want me to explain the process?
Seventeen to twenty twenty one.
Right. So, um, it's time, obviously, for us to have another a five year evaluation. The state requires it. So the architects will be this year doing the building condition survey. And it's due to the state by February twenty two. So by next year, we'll have a completely new five year plan. Um, and we'll see what that looks like. That that's.
And some of, some of these items that have not yet been funded may roll over into the new plan. This is not. This is not us prioritizing our capital projects. These are architects doing the work and looking at things like boilers and and.
But if you just want to pull up one of the buildings, I'll show, we're we're working really hard to try and do a lot of this stuff in house.
Any, anyone in particular?
So it doesn't matter. We revised this, um, the spreadsheet to add our own columns where it's at, where we've decided what could be an in-house project.
This is Wood Hall.
So if you look at, um. Twenty seven, twenty eighteen, we have three projects there that we have outlined that we could do in-house and not use capital monies. Um, if you go down. Uh, in year eighteen nineteen, and you go down about ten where it says, um. Where it says remove cracked and worn plumbing fixtures at fifty thousand, we did it in-house for five. That's the type of stuff that we are are trying to do, because sometimes, you know, we can definitely do it in-house, uh, at much lower cost. It's not the overhead and the inflate, you know, any prices are being inflated. So that's why we've added those columns and every year we analyze it to see what more could we do in-house. Um, to get as much on this report done. So hopefully, when the report comes back next year, a lot of this stuff, we'll see that we've done and and. Won't be a lot on there. Okay, and the architects, they look at it just as a condition thing. They don't know how much we have in reserve or care. They're just saying what, if they had unlimited funds, this is what. They're required by the state to really look at the condition of the school building.
Not even about.
Have inhabitable, is it, you know, are the boilers okay, are the roofs okay, right, safety. You know, upgrades that are required, you know, new building codes, new building materials. So they're looking at it from that perspective. They don't know, you know, how we're going to finance it.
Right. Just include the physical buildings or does that include like outdoor equipment, like playground?
There's playground equipment on here. They have, it's listed on one of the primary schools. Um, outdoor equipment, they look at the playground equipment. And the field conditions and the.
Actually looking at doing some playground work now.
So that's how the parking lots end up on here.
These would obviously be aligned with the capital fund proposals, correct? The items that are.
This is what they give us and they say this is what you need to do and then we review it and see pull off projects. And then we see how much we have in reserves and how much.
So anything that we just saw in Jim's presentation would have been on this list.
Solar.
Except like the solar, right.
The turf field wouldn't be on here.
Yeah, right, field, you know, doing some nice things, you know, like that. Well, when the replacement have been on there, so when they have looked at the old field and said, you need to replace this?
Yeah, I'd have to look at, I don't know if that was necessarily on here.
What turf replacement?
Yeah.
It's not on here. So at the time they did it, four years ago, we were still well within our warranty. So, um, they wouldn't have looked at that.
We had that covered anyways.
Yeah, we had it by the other reserve, yeah.
Yeah, the unfortunate thing is this is now pretty much a backward looking document, right? We really need a a for the further. Looking.
And that's what we'll get. Um, we should have it by this time next year.
So next year it should start, this one, this one runs from sixteen seventeen to twenty twenty one. Next year should begin with twenty one, twenty two and take us out five years. And understand districts must do this. I think they stagger it across the state, which which year your building condition surveys must be submitted. The architects are involved, um, and next year is is our year. Sometimes it's just a visual inspection, other times you've got to recreate a plan. I'm sorry, Kelly.
We have to complete everything on this list within that timeframe?
No, not necessarily, but thi- this is what they're telling us based on an architectural evaluation needs to be done at at each building. And that doesn't mean we can't do some of the work in-house without any, uh, without, with with little outlay at all. Um, but but again, their focus is on infrastructure and safety.
Like, for example, it says replace sand and wood chips at the playground annually. Obviously, that's something that can.
Correct.
Done in-house.
This is a, this is a public, this is attached to the board agenda. It is uh, in it in the public domain, so I. You all can look at it as can anybody who is interested. Who is not here with us tonight.
Anything else?
Nope.
Yeah, their numbers are all very high.
You're all.
We don't just, so when we, when we comes time to present the projects we're recommending, we ask for updated pricing. So this, and unless we've asked for a project for updated pricing, that's old pricing.
Yeah.
So when we select our projects, we say, alright, we need updated pricing on a boiler, on a roof, on this, on that, and then I, that's what we present to you. As if they was done five years ago.
Okay, I'm going to stop share.
Now, time for our public question and answer portion. So our normal.
I think you guys have exhausted all your questions. Yeah, no, seriously.
I mean, if you think of something.
This is, this is not, this is not formal public commentary, this is.
Except to say that the formal public commentary rules.
The rules, the the Robert's rules of order are still in place, so, you know, if you have a question, please ask it and then we'll.
Yes, so.
Leave you so we can answer it.
Yeah, we'll limit everybody to, I mean, the same rules apply as. Normal public commentary, so you, please, uh, if you're a resident of the district or an employee, please. Um, raise your electronic hand if you have a question or a comment on the, what was presented this evening.
There's not a.
Budget development process.
Correct. It's not a huge attendance tonight, I think, because it's not a typical board meeting and obviously budget questions can be asked at any time. And can also be emailed to myself, of the Kathy, at any point, we can certainly address in between meetings. We we don't want you to wait. If there is something that you want clarified.
Yeah, I would always just say to the public that the earlier you ask your question about the budget, the better, because it's. As the meetings go on, it becomes much more difficult to.
Asking in April for something completely different than what we planned is not going to happen, so hon- honestly, the the planning. The budget planning starts in the fall for us when we ask our budget managers, our principals, our directors. Uh, et cetera, to to look at their prior year budgets and to prioritize for the coming year. Uh, once we get toward that adoption process to ask for something completely different, this is a a little less manageable. I'll leave it at that.
I don't see any hands, so I won't bother saying identify yourself. Do you see any?
It's kind of crazy. We've gotten to the point where third, fourth week of school, you start asking the people what do they need for money for next school year, right?
It's it's incredible. It really is.
And and this year, I would assume it was even crazier.
I I mean, I will say that that Kathy has done a a ridiculously phenomenal job, just, you know, helping facilitate. We we had to shave supplies, we had to, you know, our goal is to maintain program and to make sure we don't take opportunities away from kids and. You know, we want to keep our staff here. So we've looked at everything from top to bottom to make sure that we didn't have to take anything. Away that would impact. Our district community and that's a tribute to to Kathy and all the people that are managing their. Our district community, and that's a tribute to Kathy and all the people that are managing their departmental budgets, building budgets.
I'm sure that, well, thank you another hundred times as this process goes along. But for now.
Just a reminder that if some of this revenue comes back, we can look at replacing something, I mean, right now they're working off. You know, it, it may be below zero-based budgeting in certain departments, because we've asked them to, to remove ten percent of, of their supplying material monies for next year. Um, and hopefully we start to continue emerging from the situation that we faced for the past three hundred and sixty-five days plus. And we can start to. Re-energize and, and move forward in the right way.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Michelle, in a second from Linda, all in favor?
Thanks to our, our public for joining us tonight.
Thank you so much.
And we will see you next Monday, next Monday is the next formal board meeting, which includes a budget component. Normal board meeting. You know, that, that's, that's a good point, uh, the question has come up, when can we get back to public? In public, uh, I believe the current executive order that allows the remote extends to March twenty-fourth. I also know that the gathering limit, public gathering limit increases from fifty in and out to one fifty. I'm sorry, one hundred and two hundred on March twenty-second, um, so.
So let's discuss it on Monday.
On, on Monday, we can discuss, you know, again, pending, there, there's, there's still question marks as, right now, we've been hovering at around four or five percent. And then it's a matter of comfort for the, for the board and for the community, so it's something we can discuss on Monday.
Okay, we'll just, we'll add it to the discussion.
Okay, terrific. Thank you, folks, and have a great evening.